Okay, good afternoon. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 11th, 2024 City Council Meeting. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional lands of the Treaty for Territory, a treaty signed with thirty-five First Nations across southern Saskatchewan and parts of Alberta and Manitoba, and the original lands of the Cree, Soto, Dakota, Nakota, Lakota, and on the homeland of the Métis Nation. The city of Regina owes its strength and vibrancy to these lands and the diverse indigenous peoples whose ancestors' footsteps have marked this territory, as well as settlers from around the world who continue to be welcomed here and call Regina home. Some members of city, or sorry, some members of council and city administration may be attending the meeting today through videoconferencing. I would like to remind those who are attending through videoconferencing of the following. Please ensure that your video camera and microphone are turned off, and when speaking, remember to unmute your microphone and enable your video camera. Uh, some delegations may attend the meeting today through teleconferencing to address council on various items on the agenda. There we go. Okay, can I have someone move a motion to approve the agenda at the call of the chair with the following adjustments? Uh, to add the registered list of delegations uh, to table item CR-24-138 Regina Police Service 2025-2026 Operating and Capital Budget to the March 2025 City Council Budget Meeting. Uh, to table item uh, CR-24-115 Cana CT Cohen to the April 9th, 2025 City Council Meeting, and the following items to the January 29th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Uh, CM-24-14 Housing Supply and Revitalization Initiatives Update. Uh, MN-24-12 Nuisance and Under-Utilized Properties. MN-24-18 Pilot Project for Fair-Free Transit to a High School in Regina. MN-24-19 Review of the Regina Animal Bylaw 2009, Bylaw 2009-44. And to withdraw the following items. Uh, MN-24-7 Establish Respectful Communication Towards City Manager and City Staff and Related Communication. MN-24-10 Dissolving the Human Resources Subcommittee of Regina City Council. MN-24-14 Emergency Shelter Reconsideration. MN-24-16 Senior Men's Hockey Ice Time and Related Delegations and Communications. MN-24-20 Reconsideration of Previous Decisions Respecting the Building and Location of a new indoor aqua, uh, indoor, new indoor aquatics. So, looking for some to approve. And, okay, Councillor Manzanelli. Uh, and uh, look for a secondar. Councillor Radons. Radons, thank you. I will call the question, any opposed? And carried. At the call of the chair, item CM-24-20 Third Quarter Forecast will be moved up in the agenda order to be considered by council after item CR-24-111. And we'll go to, can I ask Councillor Manzanelli to move a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the October 9th, 2024 and November 18th, 2024 meetings of city council? And Deputy Mayor Zakidniak, will you please second approval of the minutes? Any errors or omissions? Okay, I will call the question, any opposed? And carried. Okay, we will now consider the consent agenda. Uh, the consent agenda is moved and voted upon without debate as one item, regardless of the number of agenda items included in it. The consent agenda for this meeting includes the following items. Uh, CR-24-134 Community Well-being Federal Funding Opportunity. CR-24-135 Growing Canada's Community Canopies Lakeview Community Association Grant Application. And CR-24-136 Global Transportation Hub Property Tax, uh, sorry, Property Assessment and Taxation Services Agreement. Uh, I will now ask if any member wishes to remove any items from the consent agenda for consideration and debate at this meeting?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you, uh, I would like to remove the encampment motion off the consentage item, please.
Is that's the community well-being? Okay, so all, uh, so all the other items listed aside from Councillor Fro's uh, CR-24-134 Community Well-being Federal Funding Opportunity, the other items uh, will be, uh, look to be removed? Yep, so can I have a motion to approve, uh, the consent agenda? Oh, who is first? We'll go with Councillor Manzanelli, I saw his hand first. And a secondar? Councillor Zakidniak? Everybody's eager today. Uh, any opposed? Okay, carried. So, item number, uh, item CR-24-134 Community Well-being Federal Fuzzing, Federal Funding Opportunity is deemed removed from the consent agenda and will be considered by council in the agenda order at the call of the chair. Okay, uh, I would like to call upon delegation, uh, D-24-244 Jim Elliott from Regina. Uh, please, uh, come forward, uh, please introduce yourself for the record, uh, the organization you're representing, if any, and what city town you reside in. You have five minutes to address city council, after which you will have the opportunity to respond to any questions that members of council may have for you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council, my name is Jim Elliott, I live in Regina. And I've been an activist in this community for a number of years. The principal reason why I am before you today is in fact to reiterate what I said uh, back when this initially was, came forward is that the city wastes a lot of water. It also is what I guess would be called hydrophobic, in fact. We try to get rid of as much water as we can when in fact, as most of you will know, this is an arid, uh, climate and we probably in many cases need more water than we actually have, but, uh... And then what we also do is we spend millions of dollars, uh, pumping water from Buffalo Pound Lake to this city and in fact, most of it, as many of you will know, is, uh, or should I say, all of it is potable water and, and, but in fact, most of it doesn't need to be potable water, so again, we're expending a tremendous amount of money, uh, just to get it here. The other thing which I would mention is that there's a number of alternatives which I think we should be pursuing more rigorously than we currently are. Uh, the examples I've given in, in the, in the presentation are pretty self-explanatory. We've got a household in the city that, uh, took rain harvesting, uh, and used the, the water off their roof essentially to handle any of the potable or non-potable water use in their house, including their toilets, so their water that we're sending to our, or they're sending to their sewage system isn't, uh, potable water initially. We've also got numerous examples of people that have gone to, uh, natural landscape and in fact are, are moving more rigorously in that direction as, as some of you again will know. And I guess the last option, and I guess the more radical, if you want to call it that, is the option that I've had to take in that in fact I don't use city water at all in my house. I have a, a separate supplyable potable water and then the remainder of that comes from rainfall and snow if, if, if necessary. But essentially, no water leaves my backyard and, and front yard. And in fact, it, you know, uh, up until this year, I've been very lucky to be able to essentially survive quite well on, uh, on the rainfall that we do get. So again, we can do it, but I think we need to do it much more rigorously than we currently do. I will also point out, and I guess this is kind of my closing comments in that sense, is that you're now being asked to expend a whole bunch of money to expand the water system when, if we had, in fact, uh, implemented this ten, fifteen years ago, I suspect we probably wouldn't be doing what we're doing right now, which is expanding that hundred and fifty million dollars on expanding the water system. We could have, in fact, eliminated that from our, our budgets. And then, and one, my hope is that by taking a much more rigorous action on, uh, on water conservation, then, in fact, this will be the last time we actually have to worry about expanding the, the water system because we, we have, uh, all the potable water we need. We just need to be, uh, doing it much more conservatively as well as utilizing the water that we, uh, that we have coming to this city. So I'll leave it at that. I guess the other thing which I mentioned to the previous council and being that there's only two of you that are actually from that previous council, I've got a couple of books that I offered to provide to staff and council if they wish to get into figuring out how to do a lot more rainwater harvesting and utilization of the rain that we, we now get to come to the city. But with that, I'll, uh, I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott, for your presentation. Uh, do any council members have questions for Mr. Elliott? Counselor Zakidniak?
Thank you for coming today. Um, I just wanted to, in terms of your ideas in relation to water conservation, I wanted to ask if you are aware that the city is, um, in the process of developing a climate adaptation strategy? And so first of all, if you're aware of that, and then secondly, encourage you to submit your ideas through Service Regina for consideration in that process. Is that something you were aware of?
Uh, I was aware that the province had initiated a number of, uh, drug preparedness, uh, initiatives across the province. I wasn't specifically aware of what Regina was doing, uh, but I'd be happy to add, uh, things to it. I think there are examples that have been used in other cities that, uh, that we could readily start utilizing with minimal impact on the, both the budget as well as, uh, actions of people, so...
I'd also invite you, if you'd like, you can just email them to me and I will forward it on through the City Manager Council Liaison position. So, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Counselor Rasovic?
I guess not so much a question, just, uh, let's make a comment. I do catch rainwater as well. I don't flush my toilet every single time, trying not to use as much water. Like I said, the point I'll make is I, I have, even when I was knocking doors, I did bring up the point about conserving water because we do live in Palau's Triangle. A lot of people don't know that. Anyways, when he came to Explore Western Canada and, um, I did knock on doors and talk to people about, you know, not forcing people to do things, but maybe promoting like zero-scape lawns, so with natural Saskatchewan grasses and flowers, et cetera. And who knows, maybe that's something that, again, the city could supply those, those sort of, uh, those things for the front lawns and, you know, then people could use a lot less water. So, no, I, I kind of agree with you on a lot of your points, so I just wanted to kind of reinforce what you're saying.
Yeah, no, I think the, uh, the city, uh, through some of their landscaping initiatives are looking at, at some of this. I know we've, uh, I'm involved with, uh, Nature Regina and we have the native plant garden in front of the Royal Saskatchewan Museum and, uh, there's definitely been a, an uptake on, on that. I think the, the ongoing problem and what we've been able to try to do to some extent is supply of, of plants and seeds is really quite limited. And so if there's a way that, uh, the city could take some initiative in that way by, uh, both harvesting, uh, native, uh, grass seed and stuff like that and, and being able to provide it to the citizens, I'm pretty sure that there's a lot more, uh, people that would be quite happy to, uh, to not have to mow the lawn every three weeks in the summer, but in fact, maybe, maybe not even mow it at all because they wouldn't because it will simply be about six or eight inches tall and that's as far as it goes.
Anyways, thanks.
Thanks, Counselor. I'll just remind, if you're, uh, posing a question to the delegates, just make sure it's in the form of a question. Any other questions for Mr. Elliott? Seeing none, uh, thank you, Mr. Elliott, for coming and, uh, I'll ask you, please return to the gallery. Thank you. Okay, we will now consider item CM-24-17 Water Network Expansion Project Debt Financing, the supplemental report. Uh, please note this report, CM-24-17, uh, is a, uh, sorry, a receive and file report only as it contains additional information related to the next item that we're going to discuss, uh, CR-24-131. Given this, a motion to receive and file this report is required to be made on this item and any approvals for action or amending motions to a decision on this subject matter are to be made during the consideration of the next item. So with that, I will ask Deputy City Manager Ted Schistler to please introduce the report. Sorry, and I meant Ms. Mickey Anderson.
Thank you so much to you, Mayor Baczynski. Water Expansion Network will ensure that we have adequate water pressure in our city now and into the future. This project was approved and debt was identified as a funding source by council in July 2023 after many funding options were considered. We needed to apply for the debt and have been using cash to pay for the project. Not approving a debenture such as this at this point in the process has never happened in the Canadian market and will create Canadian market concerns for other municipalities. We are at the stage where the debenture offering has been priced and the order book has been filled. This is the last step in council decisions that have been previously approved. At this stage, if we do not proceed, the implications are, it's highly possible we would not have access to debt markets for debentures for three to five years, meaning it would impact not just this project, but future projects. Secondly, future borrowing would be at a higher interest rate. And third, since the order book has been filled, we would have to pay back any unwinding fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Uh, can I have someone move this report to be received and filed? Counselor Flores? And, and a seconder? Counselor Manzanelli? Yep. And, uh, I will ask the mover, Counselor Flores, uh, do you wish to speak on the report? Okay, and any questions from council members on this report, remembering what I said earlier? Very good. Okay, uh, Counselor Flores, would you like to close the debate? Okay, and I will ask the clerk to start the vote on the receive and file.
Thank you, Mayor. So members of council, we're having significant tough, technical difficulties today accessing your electronic vote pads. Um, we've been trying for two hours to fix them and we can't seem to get there. So what we're going to do, because we are required to have recorded votes, I will ask all those in favor to raise their hands and please keep your hands raised until I've called your name. And by the same token, if you are against it, raise your hand at that time and keep it raised until I am finished. So I will start with Counselor Rasovic. Are all in favor, please put your hands up and then I'll just knock you down. It would appear that we have unanimous, so I won't call those. Thank you.
Okay, we will now consider item CR-24-131 Water Network Expansion Project Debt Financing. And I will ask Deputy Mayor Zakidniak to please introduce the report.
The mic's not on, okay. Uh, through the chair, thank you. Um, so, um, with this, um, main report, it was first considered by city council on July 17th of this year. Um, and there, as noted, I think there was a, a motion made to refer, there were recommendation back to administration to report back, um, at this meeting with a more fulsome financial modeling projection about the 1.5 at the time percent increase to the mill rate. And so that's how we ended up with the supplemental report in front of us today and are going back to, and that, which, um, is now, is attached to the main report. And the recommendation is to include a mill rate increase in the 2025 budget of, estimated at 1.39% and to make some changes to the investment policy and reserve provisions and delegate authority, excuse me, to the Deputy City Manager of Financial Strategy and Sustainability to negotiate and approve amendments. And so, um, I'll, I'll just leave it at that, I think. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask, uh, for concurrence, to move an amendment to change under item one, under the recommendation, uh, that the estimated, uh, currently estimated percent should be changed from 1.39 to 1.34. Oh, not, just not you. Because I don't think you can. Okay, Counselor Turnbull? And a seconder? Counselor Fro? Okay, and Counselor Turnbull, do you have, would you like to speak to the report? Or to the amendment, sorry? You're good, okay? Okay, and anybody else have any questions on that minor amendment? Questions or comments? Oh, we're taking... Okay. Okay, so now we're back to having someone move the report? Oh, move, move, we have moved it. Okay. 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 Okay, so for the entire report, uh, does any, do any council members have questions on, on the report? Okay, uh, Counselor Zakidniak?
Um, I'm just hoping, we do have, um, in the decision history section, there's, there's a bit of a history of how we got to where we are today and I just wonder if administration could briefly describe for, um, the benefit of the public? How is it, I, I did talk a bit about how we tabled part of the report, but like that there's been multiple checkpoints prior to us getting here today to try and finalize this decision process? And so if administration could briefly touch on those for the benefit of folks since it's been, uh, a long time coming that we're here today? Through the chair, please.
Hear from Mr. Schistler?
Thank you, Mayor. Through the chair. Good question, Counselor, so I'll, of course, that's what happens when I start talking. Um, I will start and my colleague, Mr. Donie, can add some color around, um, some of it if necessary. Basically, uh, the journey was initially to approve the project in the first place. And then, how are we going to fund it? It's a larger project over time. So that would have come, I believe it came a couple of times just around the project itself, the costing, how it, how it all works. Then the funding decision, and at that time, the funding decision, uh, which was, um, late 2023, I believe, and moving into 2024 was, we would, the city would pursue debt to finance this project, but knowing at that time that we did not have enough debt limit at that time as it was low and knowing that an application was either imminent or underway, council decided that city administration could use resources that weren't needed in 2024, cash financial resources not needed in 2024 to begin the multi-year project, which is what we did. Subsequent to that, as you mentioned, uh, earlier in 2024, the decision came back around specifically debenture funding and that this was the debt structure to use, which was approved. And, and, uh, this current report and the supplemental information is provided now to confirm the terms of that specific debenture. So, um, one, one thing just to note, if, I think everybody got it, but originally we estimated a 1.39% increase. Um, it's a 1.34 because the rate we actually secured for the debenture was slightly lower than we had anticipated when we wrote the original paper a few weeks ago.
Thank you, Mr. Schistler. Uh, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, uh, who's my mover on that one? Counselor Turnbull? Counselor Turnbull, uh, would you like to close debate? Oh, sorry.
Oh, uh, thank you for your explanation. Um, it was a journey to get here and we've all had to get caught up and learn a bunch of, um, information. And, uh, we really appreciate, uh, the time you've, patience you've taken for us new councils members to help us to understand this very big decision in front of us. Thank you.
Okay, I will ask the clerk to start the vote.
So again, uh, members, I would ask that all those members in favor of the report, before you place your hands up until I recognize you. All in favor? It appears unanimous, Mayor. Motion is carried.
Okay. We will now consider the public notice bylaws related to the previous report, CR-24-131. I will ask, again, Deputy Mayor Zakidniak to please do first reading of the following bylaws, Bylaw Number 2024-98, the Regina Administration Amendment Bylaw, 2024 Number 7, and Bylaw Number 2024-99, the Water Network Expansion Project Sinking Fund Debenture Bylaw, 2024.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I move seconded by Counselor Rasovic that bylaws Number 2024-98 and Number 2024-99 be introduced and read a first time.
Thank you, Mayor. I will ask all members in favor of first reading to raise your hands. It is unanimous, Mayor. First reading is passed.
That bylaws 2024-98 and Number 2024-99 be read a second time.
Okay, uh, does any member of council have questions? Okay, seeing none, uh, I will ask the clerk to start the vote.
Thank you, Mayor. With respect to second reading, all members voting in favor, please raise your hands. Second meeting is passed unanimously, Mayor Matt, uh, Mayor.
Second meeting is passed unanimously, Mayor Vaschinsky. Okay, Deputy Mayor Zakiniak, will you please do consent for third reading of the bylaws?
I move, seconded by Councilor Frow, that council hereby consent to bylaws number 2024-98 and number 2024-99 going to third reading at this meeting.
I would now ask all members of council to indicate their approval to proceed to third reading at this meeting. All members have voted in favor unanimously. This passes third, proceeding to third reading as required by law. Okay, and Deputy Mayor Zakiniak, will you please do final reading of the bylaws?
I move, seconded by Councilor Burton, that bylaws number 2024-98 and number 2024-99 be read a third time.
Again, I would ask all members, those in favor of voting third reading at this meeting, to vote now. Third reading passes unanimously, Mayor. Thank you. Okay, we will now consider item CR 24-132, Advance Approval 2025 Budget and CIGP. I will ask Deputy Mayor Zakiniak to please introduce the report. You're doing a great job.
That's excellent, because I'm not quite ready yet. So I appreciate those positive words. Advance approval. Okay, there we are. Okay, thank you. So this was discussed at Executive Committee last week. And the recommendations that Executive Committee seeks concurrence in the following recommendations, which is to approve 92,300, sorry, 92,362,886 in the 2025-26 General Fund Capital Projects identified in Appendix A. And to approve 1,311,660,000 in the 2025-26 Utility Fund Capital Projects in Appendix B. And 5,597,709 from the General Fund, Operating Fund for the operating and maintenance review for Mosaic Stadium and 2025 Community Investments Allocation. And so the rationale is first that as we have so many new member, with an election, it is commonplace, and especially with so many new members on council, for the budget final approval to happen in March is when, early in 2025. So there are certain items that need to be approved prior to then to meet deadlines and completion dates and the community investments allocation to allow the funded agencies to proceed without further delay. So that is why these recommendations are coming forward. And as noted, Executive Committee seeks concurrence.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Zakiniak. And Councilor Turnbull, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a conflict of interest with Regina Police Service Furniture, Fixer and Equipment. I've spoken with my lawyer and have been advised to be diligent, note conflict, and excuse myself from budget items related to the RPS on this agenda. I will be sorting out my business relationships to have better separation for future votes. So I'd like to request the four Regina Police Service items be moved separately so that I could be part of the rest of it.
Thank you, Councilor Turnbull. Okay, out of respect for Councilor Turnbull, we're going to, I'm going to ask if, actually, one second. Okay. Well, first, I'm going to get someone to move the report. Councilor Burton? And a seconder? Councilor Mansonelli? And Councilor Burton, do you want to speak on the report? No, okay. Yeah, and what we'll do is, does any council members want to speak on the police budget aspect, the furniture that Councilor Turnbull referenced? Just so we can get ahead of that. And, and that way we could invite her back if we can answer those questions now. Okay. Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to, oh, did you have a question, Councilor Rasovic?
Could I answer it? Oh. Sure.
Okay, I'll invite the admin from Regina Police if they want to come down to the delegation box. Thank you for coming. If you wouldn't mind just introducing yourselves briefly.
Sure. My name is, good morning, or good afternoon, Mayor Vaschinsky and councilors. My name is Elizabeth Nguyen. I'm the Executive Director of Corporate Services at the Regina Police Service. Part of my, my portfolio involves asset management, which is related to this project and the furniture ask, including IT and fleet, which are two additional asks in for our advanced capital ask. With me, I have Gerard Kay, who is our asset manager, and also the RPS project lead for the RPS Facilities Renewal Project, and Ms. Tracy Raisen, who is our financial manager.
Thank you very much. Okay, Councilor Rasovic, you had your.
Oh.
Do you have a question?
Through the chair. Thanks for being here. I kind of asked this question last week because I didn't know the situation, I guess, that you're leasing property, there's, you're leasing properties and now you're amalgamating everything to one place. You know, and I guess my question last week was, is there not, I just asked, like, is there not potential furniture or fixtures, things that can be, I mean reused, and I guess be sustainable? You know, I mean, a percentage or some or not, you know, that cannot be brought over?
Yes, so thank you for the question. I'll preface my answer with just a little bit of context. So according to the Police Act, municipality is obligated to provide adequate and reasonable facilities for police services to maintain a reasonable standard of law enforcement. However, RPS, through our capital budget, we are responsible for program-specific furniture, fixtures and equipment. And that's what you see that we're asking for in our capital budget. And when we talk about program-specific, it's specific to policing. So for example, the construction of interview rooms or equipment and furniture related to forensic identification labs, security systems, things that are not normal to a particular business and things that wouldn't be included in the base build that the city is responsible to provide for us. So the request that you see in front of you includes those specific items. It includes security systems. It includes equipment for our forensic identification labs and other specific police required items. There is a small amount related to office furniture, such as desks and filing cabinets and the such. We are reusing most of our old furniture. So the only furniture that aren't being reused are ones that are either so old that they do not meet ergonomic standards or so obsolete that we cannot reconfigure them to meet the new space. Further, as part of the project, we have new square footage being built. So new spaces and new positions that we don't have currently. So there is no old furniture to bring forward into those new spaces. But for the most part, we are using as much of the old furniture as we can.
Thanks.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Seeing none. Okay, yeah, thank you for coming. And you can return to the gallery. Thank you. Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to hold a vote for the four Regina Police components of the pre-approved budget. So then that way we can handle that and then Councilor Turnbull can return. So I will hand the vote, call the clerk to handle the vote. So again, members, if you were in favor of the approval of the four related capital requests, advance requests from the Regina Police Service, I'd ask you to raise your hands at this time. The vote carries 10 to 0, with the exception of Councilor Turnbull. And Martha will get her now. Okay, we'll go back to Councilor Burton. So we've excluded the Regina Police portion for the previous. So I'll go back to you for the remainder. As the mover, do you wish to speak on the report for the remaining items?
Instant timelines and project requirements. So it's nice to see the administration taking proactive action to keep things running smoothly with getting these requests through early so that you can proceed smoothly and at the lowest possible cost. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Burton. Councilor Zakiniak?
Thank you. Yes, I do have a few questions. So the, I just wanted some more information about the north, sorry, Northwest Regina Transportation Network Study. I'm looking for the parameters of the area of this study. So what is considered Northwest Regina when we're, when we're considering this study? Anyone can speak to that through the chair.
Ms. Braden?
Through the chair. I'll ask Ms. Saget to, again, to speak to that question.
Through the chair. It's really the Northwest quadrant of the city. So pretty much everything from, if you take Albert Street and SASS Drive and everything in that quadrant. So it would look at all the projects that are currently on the SAF list for that area. So everything from the Pasqua Street and Ring Road intersection to Ninth Avenue North to Courtney. And there are a number of others. I can't remember off the top of my head. But looking at all the projects and confirming that they're still required in that quadrant.
Okay, I was, you said, you talked about Albert and SASS Drive. I was specifically wondering about West Era. It sounds like, well, it actually sounds like my entire board would be included in the Northwest quadrant.
Correct.
Yeah, so I just wanted clarity on that. That's great. I'm happy to hear that. And then I do have another question in relation to the Speaker's Corner Drainage Project. So my question on that one. Sorry, I'm trying to find it in my package. But as this is located in Wascana Park, what occurred to me last night is, would there be the ask of the provincial government to contribute to the costs of this drainage project? Through the chair.
Through the chair. So we've been working very closely with both the Water Security Agency and the PCC as it is on their land. And at this point, because it was a failure of the city's infrastructure, we're not looking for them to reimburse us for anything or to cost share. If they're looking to make things better than they were, then there may be an ask at that time. But right now, we're just looking to repair the underground storm pipe and restore the existing services.
Okay, this is, I can't find it in my package, but I believe, I believe the cost is $15 million. Is that accurate?
Through the chair, yes, that's the request for the advanced capital approval for the project.
Okay. But the perception is that this is all under the city's ownership, that there's, it does not make sense to, for them to contribute to the costs.
Through the chair, yes. So it was a stormwater pipe that's owned and operated by the city that failed. And so that's why we wouldn't be looking to ask for any additional funding from PCC unless they wanted to improve the park from its previous state.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Turnbull? Go ahead.
To the chair. My question is about the, our Cola Corridor Study identified here. And it just had identified the need for our northbound on-ramp Edison Point Avenue. I was just wondering if there is consideration to be doing the northbound off-ramp at the same time? And would it not make sense efficiency-wise to do on and off?
Thank you, through the chair.
Through you, Mayor Vaschinsky. I will also refer that question to Ms. Saget.
Through the chair, I might seek a little clarification for what you're, you're asking. There is currently a ramp, as you're heading northbound on Ring Road, that exits off to Asinaboya. This is just adding the ramp that then allows you to go from Asinaboya onto the Ring Road, also going northbound. Going southbound, there would be no reason to have an off-ramp as it wouldn't go anywhere. There's no land. It terminates and it couldn't go any further to the, I guess that would be the west. So that ramp wouldn't make any sense. So the, the final configuration of this interchange would have three ramps, two on the northbound lanes and one on the southbound lanes.
Yes.
So I'm just, sorry, there's a diagram here. Just asking if there is opportunity or maybe it is, the way the landscaping is to also have, like, because this is to go north, like, on-ramp to go north. But can you go north? Like, how would you word that?
Southbound Ring Road to westbound, eastbound.
Go north both directions, I guess.
And I apologize, I'm not sure I'm fully understanding.
Southbound Ring Road to eastbound Cinnabon.
Southbound Ring Road to eastbound Cinnaboya.
Southbound Ring Road to eastbound Cinnaboya.
Yeah.
I don't believe there is land available for that type of movement. Currently, the bridge only accommodates one lane in that direction. So enabled to, in order to do that, we would have to widen the bridge, and we'd probably have to acquire land. I believe it is Douglas Avenue that, or I apologize, I can't remember the name, Around the Park, that would impede enough room to be able to make that off-ramp. And the widening of the bridge would have to happen as well.
And has that been looked into?
Currently, so in the study that we did for the Arcola Corridor Study, which looked really at the traffic movements in the southeast, did not recommend that as a project that would improve traffic flow in, in the southeast.
I can ask more questions another time.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Rasovic?
Just back to, just back to Councilor Zakiniak's question, just about that in Wascana Park, the, I guess that's the wastewater sewage?
Through the chair, stormwater.
The stormwater. I guess, you know, it was probably built at the time, the time it was probably built is when, I'm just saying, the province probably was funding a lot of these projects back then. I'm assuming, because it's pretty old. So, you know, and it is in the park, and I guess my thinking is to, you know, maybe we should be going back, I think, to the province, because they are partners, they can end the park for possible funding on something like that.
Through the chair, I'll just provide a bit of context of, of what we're referring to. So this is really the outlet of our storm system that drains our downtown area, so from College North all the way to SASS Drive. So all the stormwater that falls in our streets goes to our underground pipes and, and goes to the outlet into Wascana Lake or Wascana Creek, because that is the outlet for our stormwater system. So it just so happens that it runs through Wascana Park. It is not the province's infrastructure, it's the city's infrastructure. So I don't think there'd be much appetite for the province to provide funding for the city's infrastructure.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Bezo?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, there's a project that is listed as Hawkstone Development, Land Development Resource for $3.9 million. It's planned development for 65 acres residential project in the northwest. The question and some comments is, the community of Hawkstone has one means of entry and regress, which is Argyle and Rochdale. So in the event of a major snow event like we just had, that intersection gets blocked off, emergency vehicles cannot get into Hawkstone, and people have a very tough time getting out of Hawkstone. So the question is, will this project address engineering designs and constructions for about 200 meters of roadway on Big Bear Boulevard to accommodate a second means of entry and regress from the area to address the safety concerns?
Mr. Schisler?
Mr. Mayor, I'll ask Chad Jedlick to, to respond to that. He has the details.
Through the mayor. This particular project does not. This particular project relates to the commercial parcel, which is directly on Pasqua north of the existing car dealership, so on the north side of Big Bear. And it would be to construct a chunk of Vanstone, which is directly east of that parcel, as well as to pay servicing agreement fees on that parcel when it is subdivided. The extension of Big Bear into the residential area is something that we're working on as we bring the residential land that the city owns into production, that connection will be made, and that we are looking to move that forward in 2025. But the construction of it wouldn't occur likely till 2026.
Thank you. So through the chair, so from the responses, designs are happening in 2025 with a planned construction in 2026 for that 200 meters of roadway?
Through your worship. The first step that we'll have to undertake with the residential development is to secure Development Manager, after which we would look to do the detailed design. In an ideal world, we would get the construction underway in 2026, as we believe that that land is ripe for development and that it would be good appetite for that land to come on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilor. I see no other questions. So I'll go to Councilor Burton and see if you'd like to close the debate. Go ahead.
Through the inside, making some projects happen this summer.
So that's a yes? Okay. Okay, I'll ask the clerk to start the vote.
To council, I would ask you to raise your hand if you are in agreement with the recommendation on the approved capital, with the exception of those previously four, previous four items that were dealt with respecting the police service. It appears everyone is in favor, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we will now consider item CM 24-18, 2024 Midyear Forecast Supplemental Report. So this is similar to the, the previous one around the, the water network expansion. So this report, CM 24-18, is a receive and file report only, as it contains additional information related to the next item that we're going to discuss, CR 24-111. Given this, a motion to receive and file this report is required to be made on this item, and any approvals for action or amending motions to a decision on the subject matter are to be made during consideration of item CR 24-111, the next report. So I will ask Deputy City Manager Ted Schisler to please introduce the report, oh, sorry, Dep, sorry, City Manager Nikki Anderson. That's two in a row.
Thank you, through the chair. Negotiations with the Saskatchewan Rough Riders Football Club have been ongoing since April 2023, and they're related to unpaid commercial leases to the city during COVID. As context, many landlords provided rent relief during COVID, and approving this settlement has no financial impact on 2024 or any future financials, as the amounts have been expensed in a prior year. In the original report, administration requested that of the approximate 3.55 million owed to the city, that the city grant a partial rent reduction of approximately 1.33 million. The number is largely based on agreement around the spaces that the riders were able to utilize during COVID. And if we do not reach settlement, the next step is legal action prior to April 2025, so coming up soon. And I would say that a compelling consideration in administration's recommendation is the significant risk related to pursuing legal action. So in addition to the time and the expenses related to going to trial, the result may be worse, not necessarily better, than the offer currently in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Can I have someone move that this report be received and filed? And remembering that this is, we have another report. Oh, sick, Councilor Sickles? Okay, one second. Okay, and a seconder, please. Councilor Robbins? Okay, any, sorry, Councilor Sickles, do you wish to speak on this report? Okay, any questions from council members on the report? Okay, seeing none. Councilor Sickles, would you like to close debate on this report? Oh, sorry about that. Go ahead, Councilor Flores.
Through the chair, have the members of the Riders Football Club provided any reason why they're not here to share?
Through the chair, I would say that although our negotiations have been spirited, they've been respectful, and I would say we appreciate having them in our community. I have spoken to the executive director. He actually reached out to me directly. Because frankly, the next step is potentially going to a legal court case, it is their lawyers' high recommendation that they not be here today to speak. And I would say if you were to ask our city solicitor if she would concur with that opinion, that she would likely say yes, so I may pass it over to her. But I would say they did supply a letter. They have been gracious in meeting and communicating and talking back and forth on it. But it really was through their legal counsel that they were advised to not come, because this may end up being a court case.
Thank you. And additionally, through the discussions that you've had with them in these negotiations, have they shared any thoughts or communications about how they would respond to resident concerns who might see this rent reduction as unfair, given the team's standing as a professional sports organization with other revenue streams?
Through the chair, I think it's not, it's not my place to respond, frankly, on behalf of the club. But I would say, as we talked about in the report through COVID, the CFL was completely shut down, so it wasn't a choice, and they are paying rent in the spaces that they used.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilor. I'll just remind, we have the, this is the supplemental report, so we'll have another chance, the main kind of discussion on the next one. But I'll ask, is there any other questions for the supplemental report portion of this? Okay, who's my mover on that? Councilor Sickles. Councilor Sickles, would you like to close debate?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'll ask the clerk to start the vote to receive and file.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask all members in favor to raise their hands with respect to the supplemental report. Passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, now we are going to consider item CR 24-111, the 2024 Midyear Forecast Report. This item was tabled at the October 9, 2024 City Council meeting during discussion of the report. I will call on the city clerk to provide a procedural overview, as concurrence was moved at that meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Biszinski. The midyear report had received concurrence, but council had also directed admin to come back with the additional information that you received today. So I think procedurally, what you would like, I think what you would do is you need to confirm your earlier concurrent. So essentially, we're putting this to a new vote, because it was a previous council. So you're essentially dealing with part one of the recommendation that is outlined in CR 24-111. So there's, you don't have to worry about directing admin to come back anymore, direct, admin did that. So the debate and discussion is with respect to recommendation number one, which I will ask the deputy clerk to place on the screen. So it's the first part, it's part number one is what you are now going to be voting on, because part two has happened. Well, part two, the supplemental report has happened, but there will be additional work that's going to be done by the Audit and Finance Committee moving forward. But the main genesis of the report is number one.
Thank you. So concurrence in the main motion is on the floor, and now we'll see, are there any questions from council members on the report? And this is specifically to this report now, this report's in front of you. Okay. Councilor Zakiniak, go ahead.
So there was mention of a letter from the riders that the city has received. Did I, is that, was this provided to council, and somehow I missed it, or can it be through the chair?
Ms. Anderson? Mr. Schisler?
Sorry, Chair, it's one or the other. So, yeah, I, I, obviously you didn't get it, and so I'm not sure. The, the summary of the letter was basically what we've already relayed, that the negotiations have gone on, I understand the situation, they're there, and yes, we can provide it. There's nothing sort of materially different than anything you've seen in the reports in that letter.
Okay, and so when we first discussed this, whatever date that was, the, the Rough Riders were not, did not attend the meeting to answer questions, and so that was raised at the meeting. Could they be explicitly asked to attend? Obviously, we can't compel, or we can't compel people to attend. I understand they received legal advice not to, but just to confirm, there was a specific request made on behalf of council for them to attend to answer questions from members.
Through the chair, a couple of my colleagues and I met with Ryder's CEO and CFO to both discuss the potential for different financial arrangements, and also to relay council's request that they appear.
Right.
Subsequent was the letter and what Ms. Anderson relayed.
Ms. Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you, through the chair, and I just want to be very, very clear that when the Rough Riders forwarded the letter to administration, they clearly indicated that it was supposed to be forwarded to city council. So if that was not done, I apologize, and I'm asking city administration to forward it this minute. But I, I need all of you to know that was not Saskatchewan Rough Rider oversight, that was an administrative oversight. They sent it to administration specifically asking for it to be forwarded to council.
To be clear, this is why I started with, I may have missed the letter. So if there was a letter, I missed it. I don't see anybody indicating that they received the letter. So looks like we will be sent the letter, that's great. I have received a number of questions and concerns from community members in relation to this debt forgiveness. I know that the community doesn't have all the background information about the discussions that have happened with our administration and the administration of the riders. But what I've heard from residents is they are not in favor of us writing off 1.33 million of the debt, and especially knowing that it's, it's not a financial capacity question. As the riders have acknowledged, they do have the money to pay it, they just don't think that, due to the clauses in the contract and the fact that they didn't use it during the season, that they should be, that they should pay it because they didn't use it. Like, is that a fair summary of their position?
Through the chair, I think that they would, their legal team would say that there's legal grounds to settle where they're settled right now.
Yeah, so I am, I understand the legal advice that was received by the riders. However, I'm disappointed that there is no opportunity to ask the questions that I've been asked by my residents to the riders. I do think that, I understand that legal advice was given. I think there is also the opportunity to have some careful points that you would stick to, and so you would come to council, prepare to speak on only these points, and stick to your messaging, so, or that there could have been some sort of public statement issued. I haven't seen anything if there was, aside from the fact that council was supposed to be sent the letter. So I am finding it So I am finding it very difficult to support this request. And based on what I've heard from my residents, I don't believe I will be supporting it. Although, to be clear, I understand administration's position, that they think this is a reasonable step forward. I'm also here to represent my residents and their concerns and can't even get answers to their questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fro.
Thank you, through the chair. Notwithstanding the fact that the riders aren't here today and you can't speak on their behalf, does the option in front of us today give administration a mandate to continue negotiations? Or rather, is it more actively a reflection of the conversations that you've had and that you've sort of landed on a negotiated settlement? As in, in your best estimation, will the riders accept this as a reasonable compromise?
Through the chair, yes. I would say both parties have agreed that this is a reasonable compromise. And as far as the riders are concerned, this is as reasonable as it gets before it would move on to a court case. And I would say administratively, I can absolutely see both sides. But from a legal perspective, the risk of going to court and where it could land is not a risk that I would want to take financially.
Counselor Turnbull?
To the chair, I understand the legal situation and that lawyers are good and we definitely don't want to give more money to lawyers. But the taxpayer base is also the rider fanbase, and it is the 13th man who is ultimately paying for this. And I was just wondering, have there been any alternate measures that have been discussed? Like maybe tickets given in lieu or something like that? So that they can address that it is actually the taxpayers and the 13th men and all of that. But I do understand that at this point, going into a legal situation isn't great.
Through the chair, I would say, I mentioned that the negotiations have been ongoing since April 2023 and that what's in front of you is really, we've exhausted all other options and this really is the best term that we can get to with consensus on both sides.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Burton?
During the COVID period, I was part of an organization that had to cancel events. And we received credits. And revenue was not gained during that period of time and eventually reused those up in the future. And I guess, are there a whole lot of other examples like this in the community? Whether it's swimming or other events where people basically, because they couldn't use it, had the same situation as the riders have, where they basically were forgiven or did not have to pay during that period? If you have a few examples like that.
Through the chair, I would say that you can find examples on entities that rent forgiveness was done and other ones where it wasn't. Frankly, it often depends on the contract. I would say that the administration kind of viewpoint was we really did center on what is in our contract. And so we think that we settled somewhere fair. And as I said, the way that our contract is set up, there's no certainty in what the final settlement would be, should it go to court.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions? Oh, we got a few. Okay. We've got Counselor Manzonielli.
Maybe not so much a question as a comment. That stadium is basically activated by the Rough Rider Football Club. I'm not a big fan of it, but it's part of our city. These are a community partner. I'm not a season ticket holder, I'm not the guy that goes to the rider games. I'll cheer for them for friends and family to be, you know, part of the team to some extent, but it's not my cup of coffee. But this is a legal contract, it's for the renting and use of the stadium. This was a friendly agreement come to by two parties, administration on our behalf. There's lots of exit ramps off that lease that we could have fought over. But these are a community partner in the end that went through COVID, just like the rest of us. I don't think they came out of any richer than the rest of us. And trying to get a door closed to look forward and to build is probably where we should be going with this. I think it's an adequate agreement, it reflects the space used, it makes concessions on both sides. It comes to a middle ground that's actually higher on our side of the middle ground than their side. We get two-thirds payment out of it. Starting to tangle in legal costs. I'm not willing to champion a fight against the riders to try to see if there's legal opinion here that I can't see right now to try to get a couple extra dollars out of it, because I'm pretty sure we'll lose. So I think this is a well-brought-out agreement out of a bad situation. And I'm not the biggest fan, but I'm a big enough fan to support this. Thank you.
Counselor Raddens?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, in the report under the community well-being impact, it does state there that pursuing the full repayment for the 2020 and 2021 year could negatively impact the community partnership between the city and the riders. So can you please maybe elaborate a little bit more about?
Through the chair, I think generally I would just say, any time you end up in court arguing with another entity about something, it generally doesn't end in a super positive relationship. And I would say even just city reputationally, we want to as much as possible get along with our partners. Our driving recommendation really was a risk-based financial and legal recommendation. But I would say that it's also important to us that we're, whenever possible, maintaining and strengthening partner relationships whenever we can.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions lit up here. I'm going to jump back briefly, we did miss a step. So can I get someone to move the concurrence? And I will, yeah, it'll be the third step of this. Sorry, Counselor Manzonielli, did I see your hand up to move the concurrence? Okay, and a seconder, please? Counselor Bezo? Okay, and so we had a request to separate the vote from Counselors Zakidniak. So let you go ahead. Or do you need to speak to it? Or we just would like to separate the vote between the first and the rest?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we will move to voting on part one of the report.
So council, with respect to part one of the recommendation, I would ask those in favor to raise their hands at this time. Nine members are in favor, Mayor. Counselors Bezo, Manzonielli, Zakidniak, Raddens. I'm sorry. Yeah, keep your hands up, please, because we don't have unanimity here. We have Counselor Bezo, Manzonielli, Raddens, Rashavitz, Siklis, Fro, Burton, and yourself, Mayor. Voting against, please raise. She didn't have her hand up just now. Please raise it, I can't see. And Counselor Turnbull? Those are against, please raise your hand so I can see them. Counselors Zakidniak and Flores. Part one is carrying a vote of nine to two. Now with respect to part two of the recommendation, I would again ask you, those in favor to raise your hand so I can see them, please. With respect to part two, Mayor Brashinsky, it carries unanimously 11 to zero. I apologize.
So we're going to do the next item and then we'll take a break right after the next item. Okay, yeah, we'll do this next one and then we'll take a break after this report. So we will now consider item CM 24-20, 2024 Third Quarter Forecast. I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager Ted Schisler, hopefully I'm right this time, to introduce the report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Administration is before City Council today to share the General Operating and General Utility Fund's third quarter forecast. This report also includes supplemental information on overtime and reserves. The 2024 Third Quarter Forecast reflects a $942,000 forecasted surplus in the General Operating Fund and a surplus of $6.9 million forecast for the Utility Operating Fund. Please note that this forecast is still subject to change as the fiscal year progresses. And I have a number of colleagues here, depending on what area you wish to question, we're happy to take any of your questions and provide additional detail.
Thank you. Can I have someone move the report, please? Counselor Burton? Oh, sorry. And a seconder? Counselor Raddens? Counselor Burton, do you wish to speak on the report? No? And any questions from council members on the report? Counselor Zakidniak, go ahead.
Sorry, if someone can give me, I'm having a hard time finding this report in the agenda package. If somebody has the entire 758-page thing open, if someone can tell me what page number, that would be really helpful.
341 or 342?
Okay, so I don't know if I have questions, but this is a point of order. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, I will go to Counselor Burton. Do you have, or sorry, would you like to close debate?
Yes.
And I will ask the clerk to start the vote.
Counsel, I would ask you again, all those in favor of receiving and filing the third quarter forecast, please raise your hands. Carries unanimously.
Okay, we are going to break for 15 minutes, so we will be back at 2:47 exactly. Okay, we are going to break for 15 minutes, so we will be back at 2:47 exactly. Okay, we're going to call the meeting back to order. And we will now consider item CM 24-113, Flag and Proclamation Protocol. So I will ask City Clerk Jim Nichol to please introduce the report.
Thank you, Mayor. The report before you was tabled in the fall prior to the election, so the council at that time did not consider this report. This report is addressing some concerns that have been raised as a result of the current flag policy. And so essentially, this recommendation is, to summarize, to stipulate that the only flags that will be officially flown in either the courtyard or in City Hall here are the Canadian flag, the Saskatchewan flag, the Union Jack, the City of Virginia Treaty Four, and the Métis Nation. We would continue, the recommendation goes on to say that the ceremonial flagpole that if a recognized dignitary such as an ambassador of a country has visiting Regina and is officially coming to City Hall, we would fly that flag on the ceremonial point as well. So the gist of this is that we will discontinue the practice of raising country flags on their National Day of Independence. We typically get many requests every year for this, and so we will do that. It is a long recommendation that goes on. And then we will also remove the existing proclamations policy from the procedure bylaw, and we will essentially replicate similar provisions in that. Proclamations are merely a request that an organization makes through the mayor, and the mayor is the person who signs those proclamations, that basically says, you know, "Today I mark the 13th anniversary of the Red Cross fundraiser, et cetera, et cetera." Those kind of things. The proclamation policy is much more, it's a quieter thing, it's not used as much. And again, similar provisions, we wouldn't, we would never allow the promotion of a commercial business, organizations who espouse hatred, inflammatory obscene or libelous statements, those kind of things. So it's a way to clean up the proclamation policy as well. But the real thrust behind this recommendation is to address and clean up the flag policy.
Thank you, Mr. Nichol. Can I have someone move the report, please? Counselor Zekidniak. And a seconder? Counselor Mansonelli. Counselor Zekidniak, would you like to speak on the report?
Yes, I do have actually a couple of questions. Okay, so first one is, sorry, I'm just trying to find it in here. In terms of the proclamation policy, do the, the mayor signs those? Do those also go through the clerk's office or directly to the mayor's office?
Through you, Mayor. They typically come through the clerk's office. We would then do a quick search to determine if there is a local presence. Are they in some relation to Regina, for example? Have they been done before? Do they run afoul of any of the existing criteria? And if we're satisfied, then we forward a recommendation on to the mayor for his signature.
Okay, thank you. And in, we had heard a concern, and if I missed this, my apologies, about friendship agreements with other cities and other countries, and whether there should be an exception to fly the flags of countries where we have friendship agreements. That was an exception that was requested to us. Is that accurate?
It was certainly mentioned. We have one sister city, that being Jinan, China. But I believe we've had that relationship since about 2000. And there's also an ongoing friendship city with Fujioka, Japan, which was largely spearheaded by the Public School Board and an exchange of students every second year. I have prepared an amendment to that, to that end, for a member of council to potentially raise, which would also provide an exception to fly the flag of any officially recognized sister or friendship city with Regina.
Okay. And is it accurate that the flag policy, approving flag raisings at this time is currently on hold while council clarifies our policy in this regard? Is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate through the mayor in essentially in two parts. We have, we are withholding any requests for any country who is wishing to, or any resident who's wishing to have an individual country's flag flown on their Independence Day at this time. But we are proceeding with charitable, nonprofit, or cultural organizations as is past practice. So it's the only, the only deferral right now is with respect to requests for country flags.
Okay. Okay, so it was noted that there are some potential exceptions that we have not considered, like the friendship sister-city agreement. And I wonder if there may be others that we haven't considered. If there was a desire to delay this decision for a month, would the clerk's office have any major concerns with delaying this decision till our January 29th meeting?
Through the mayor, we have, we would have no issue. Again, cultural community groups will continue to process on the community flag. And any, any individual who's requesting a country's flag has been informed and will be informed that the policy is under review, and there'll be nothing done at this time.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bezo?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, the comments about Sister City, is that flying the flag of the sister city or the nation, for example? We come here one day and we're looking at the Chinese flag.
Thank you. Through the mayor, it would be the sister city's flag, similar to that if contingency, or contingent from Regina went to one of those, and they wish to fly a flag, we would bring along the City of Regina flag.
Okay. And just on your note about flags of controversy, the dynamics of the world are such that flags are becoming very controversial. And, you know, anytime that we've got to phone up with the police and get the riot squad over here, is that considered controversy even though they might not be like six months ago or coming up? You know, we've got a lot of issues in the world right now. And, you know, the whole premise of this whole policy is control recognized people and groups, but we don't want to have the riot police show up when we're putting flags up.
Thank you. It's not my place to enter the debate. I can just offer you the perspective that the flying of any nation's flag becomes incredibly subjective in the eye of the beholder. As I explained to the previous council, regardless of their thoughts, for example, on the Russian-Ukrainian conflict, our policy would not have prohibited a citizen asking for the Russian flag to be flown on their National Day, because it didn't say you couldn't. Up until last week, we could have flown the Syrian flag, other than the fact that we put the policy on hold. So I'm just saying that things are changing so fast. And with the crossover of ethnic groups in many countries, not always happy factions with each other, we really run the risk of just having something else inflaming this going on in the future. And hence the recommendation to keep it to the six permanent flags.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Siklis.
Through you, Mayor. The people of Regina elected us to provide essential services. And from what I'm hearing about this particular protocol today, I think it would be best if we took a little bit more time to look at it carefully and do this once. I have a feeling that if we accept as the way it is today, we may be missing something that we haven't thought about. So I move to table this to the January 29th meeting.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Can I get a seconder to table that? Counselor Zekidniak? There's no debate. And with the table motion, no debate, so we will move right to a vote. I'll take that to the clerk.
Thank you. I would ask all members in favor of tabling this report to the January 29th meeting to raise your hands at this time. Those in favor, again, if you can keep them up, were Counselors Bezo, Zekidniak, Radens, Flores, Rashovich, Siklis, Burton, and yourself, Mayor. Those voting against the tabling, please raise your hands. That would be Counselor Mansonelli, Counselor Fro, and Counselor Turnbull. The tabling motion is passed in a vote of eight to three.
Okay, we'll now consider item CM 24-19, Municipal Revenue Sharing Eligibility Criteria. So I will ask Deputy City Manager Ted Schistler to introduce the report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Ministry of Government Relations requires City Council to pass a resolution annually that confirms the city of Regina has complied with the eligibility criteria to receive the municipal revenue sharing grant, or MRS. By January 15th of any given year, City Council needs to ensure the requirements have been met. And the City Council Resolution or Declaration of Eligibility has been completed to demonstrate that the municipality has fully complied with the outlined conditions for receiving the MRS grant. The report before you outlines that administration has reviewed the requirements and confirms that all the conditions noted in the resolution have been complied with. Happy to take any questions on this one.
Okay, can I have someone move the report? Counselor Mansonelli and a seconder? Counselor Radens? Thank you. Counselor Mansonelli, do you wish to speak on the report?
Appreciate the report. Happy to hear we're in good standing to try to be eligible for receiving the money. This seems really straightforward. Is there anything here controversial that wasn't included in the consent agenda?
Through the chair, I'm not, to be honest, I'm not sure why it would. There's nothing controversial here. It's a, it's a perfunctory matter. It's pretty straight ahead. I take your point, but I'm not sure why it wouldn't have been on the consent agenda.
Perfect. I thought maybe I wasn't processing. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on this one? Seeing, seeing none, Counselor Mansonelli, would you like to close the debate? I mean, no means yes, good. Okay, I'll ask the clerk to start the vote.
Again, members, I would ask if you're in favor of this motion to please raise your hands. It carries unanimously, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, so we had one item removed from the consent agenda. That was CR 24-134. So we will now consider item CR 24-134, Community Wellbeing Federal Funding Opportunity. So I will ask Deputy Mayor Zekidniak to please introduce the report. If you are, if you need me to talk slower, I can.
No, it's fine, I'm ready this time.
Excellent, thank you.
I would like to thank Counselor Fro for the opportunity to introduce another report. I'm just teasing. So we discussed this funding opportunity at our December 4th executive meeting. And I believe, like, Executive Committee seeks concurrence. I believe it was unanimous. And so the, what this is in relation to is some federal funding that is available to us and under the Unsheltered Homelessness and Encampment Initiative. And so administration has identified some projects that we've actually, it's essentially, much of it is work that we've already been undertaking. And so we actually have the ability to receive some federal funding to supplement, to offset work that has already been occurring from the City of Regina. And so in my mind, this is a good news story for us. If I've missed anything, like if I've misspoken in any way, please don't hesitate to correct me, administration. And so as I noted, Executive Committee seeks concurrence.
Thank you, Counselor Zekidniak. Can I have someone move the report? Counselor Fro and a seconder? And Counselor Turnbull, I'll give her the benefit of the doubt. And Counselor Fro, do you wish to speak on the report? Go ahead.
Thank you. There is a growing consensus, you know, within the housing and homelessness sector, you know, that ongoing planning and supports is required to address both the systemic reasons as to why people find themselves, you know, unhoused, as well as sort of requirements around harm reduction. My understanding is that if we haven't already, we're getting close to our own communities' plan and homelessness, sort of, it's time being up. And so I guess my question through the chair, notwithstanding that this is a good news story, and thank you to administration is, to what extent, if any, have we started having conversations with grassroots organizations and the provincial and federal government for a new plan, including funding and timelines, to address both the reasons why people find themselves unhoused, and of course, the requirements by way of harm reduction to support people in our community? And I ask that, given as Counselor Zekidniak mentioned, that much of these new dollars being one time don't represent incremental or material increases in supports for vulnerable people in our community.
Through the mayor, thanks for the question, Counselor Fro. So I'll speak to, we have really two guiding documents that we look to right now in commuting with respect to the issues that you spoke about. One is the Council Endorsed Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan, which is, which is really about those systemic root issues that create unsafe, unwell communities. There's certainly lots of language within that plan that speaks to where we should be investing money to take action on those things. With respect to your question about the plan and homelessness, yeah, this was a plan that came out 2019, was endorsed by council at the time, that this would be the plan that administration would look to for work that, look to, to advance work that we're, that we're currently working on. So the plan itself is currently in a, I think folks working within that space, including the community entity in Amarin Housing, other community-based service providers acknowledge that that, that plan is five, six years old. And the landscape has changed substantially since then. Our, I can't speak on our most up-to-date pit count numbers, but those will be public next week and will certainly, I would say, impact decisions moving forward within that plan. So the, the plan itself is going through a bit of a refresh at the moment. There's a governance-type committee made up of folks who sit on the Community Advisory Committee at Amarin, city representation on there as well, and some community-based organizations too. So really, I think the consensus about the plan is, the pillars and goals in the plan are still very important, but the landscape's changed a lot. Our numbers have increased, of folks experiencing homelessness have increased since the plan was made. We have new shelters, we have new emergency shelters, we have new organizations working within the space. And I'd say working more collaboratively together. So I don't have a timeline on when the new release of that plan will be, but essentially, it's a refresh to acknowledge new data, new shelter, new organizations working in the space.
Thank you. Through the chair, in 2019, and I don't expect you to remember all the particulars of the report, the working group included ministers from the provincial government, as well as sort of a broad cross-section of stakeholders. As you look to refresh, is it your expectation at this time that that diverse group of stakeholders will be included? And secondly, and my last question is, you know, what measures, what is measured gets done? So as it relates to our own role in that report, I think quite well articulated the role of the provincial, federal government, civil society in ourselves. So as it relates to our own role, how do you feel that we did over the last six years as a municipal corporation?
Thanks, through the mayor, great question. I'd say, you know, with respect to our role, we're certainly a funder. We provide funding through our social development stream of funding. Through our, through our community safety, well-being work, we've been able to add new funding with respect to harm reduction approaches. We, we continue to try and work more collaboratively with community-based organizations that are working with this space and provide funding for organizations who are aligning with that plan. One, one example I can speak to specifically, we currently give $1 million to Horse Dance Lodge, which is run by RITSS. That was through a council motion that essentially asked administration to respond to the plan and homelessness, create a funding stream that would advance goals within that plan. We know within the plan, some of the top goals are around more supportive housing spaces, especially permanent, sort of, housing-first approaches. So we established a grant called the Permanent Supportive Operating Grant, and had a call for proposals, RITSS... RITSS, Silver Sage were successful in their, their bid for that funding. I'd say municipalities' allocation of funding to support staffing and supportive housing is quite, quite rare, so this was a unique opportunity for us to support some of the goals within the plan. Like, I, I think work that, you know, our team, the city, has done has been, has been incremental. I think we've been making investments in good community-based organizations. You know, I also will acknowledge it's, as you mentioned, requires all levels of government, including federal, provincial. I, you know, we, we know the provincial government has made some commitments within the last six months a year around homelessness. Federal government's funding streams are changing a little bit, but continue to allocate the reaching home dollars to Amarin Housing. So I think from the city, it's important that we work closely with our, our community entity at Amarin and coordinated access Regina to ensure that we're taking those collective approaches.
To the chair. I've heard from some members of the public that there'd be some interest in forming a city advisory committee around being unhoused and unsheltered advisory committee, similar to others. And that was sort of identified as one of the steps in the Everyone is Home report. I wanted to ask, do you feel that there would be merit in the city striking advisory committee? Or do you feel those needs are being met elsewhere? And do you think there'd be appetite from the provincial or federal government or emergency services to sit on this advisory board if we were to make one?
Through the mayor, thanks for the question. I would, I would say that that forum currently exists. The RH Cab, which is the community advisory board on homelessness in Regina, that's essentially what that, that board is supposed to be. It's, it's made up of all levels of government, HRASC Health Authority, Regina Police Service, as well as there's, in the terms of reference, there need to be folks on that committee with lived, living experience of houselessness. So essentially, that's the body that makes decisions around federal funding in Regina, as well as actions that could be taken to address the community plan, which, which is the plan and homelessness. So I would say that that, that forum already exists, and we're currently a member of it.
Okay, so just to confirm, it would just be like a duplication of services almost?
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much. Thanks for presenting.
Thank you. And just a quick note, so just a reminder, this is around the community, the funding opportunities. So just to make sure we're keeping questions on point for, for that, that report. So I'll go to Counselor Rasovic.
If it's just specifically to just this funding, then I don't have a question.
That's what, yeah, that's what this is about.
Okay.
Yeah. So you're okay? Okay. Okay, Counselor Bezo?
Yes, thank you. So specifically to this funding model, at the executive committee, we discussed an operational cost of $30,000 per month. What are the projected costs over the next five years? Is that going to be sustained, or is that going to be rising? What are the costs to operate this facility? And, and secondly, is there any external sourcing for covering that funding?
Through the chair. So you're correct in that right now, what we're counting as about $30,000 a month are about $350,000 a year for operational costs. We'll likely have to review the numbers to understand over time, as we assume that those prices would go up. Right now, how it is currently being funded is that there is operating funding within our budget to cover these costs. We have about $500,000 dedicated so that we're not ever going over budget and that the costs of the shelter are maintained.
Anything further, Counselor Bezo?
Just writing some numbers down.
Nope, go ahead.
Just through the chair, the Eagles Club had a tax base that they did pay into the city. So does that number include the lost taxation revenue from that Eagles Club?
Through the chair, no.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions on this? Seeing none, I will go to our mover, Counselor Frow, to see if you'd like to close debate. Okay, so with that... Oh!
You'll forgive me this time?
I'll forgive you this time.
Okay. So what is, where do the costs end? So we're missing out on a tax base then. What are the true costs of operating this, this facility, the operational costs? We got $30,000 per month plus the lost taxes, which we have to essentially gain from somewhere. What are the, the overall costs? Are we looking at more like $40,000 a month?
Through the chair, so the property tax loss that we had specific to the Eagles Club is $21,500. And then in regards to what we've done, that's really all the costs that we have right now based on the last few years running the nest. We haven't come up against any other costs, as the other costs in regards to the operations of the shelter are done through Regina Treaty Status Indian Services with their operations agreement with the province.
Okay. And then one other thing with this investment that we're looking at putting forth, what is the, what do we have for metrics of measurements to say how successful this program is going to be or not going to be?
So I think, I think, just, just to interrupt quickly, so again, going back, this is for the federal funding we're getting from the federal government, and it's applied to a number of programs in that. So is that specific to the...
Yeah, that's part of, part of the question. You know, it's, it's great that we're having some, some federal funding and we're putting up our own dollars, but, you know, do we have anything in place that we're going to measure and say, you know, here's how successful we are?
Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, through the chair. So if I was to go through it line by line, the emergency shelter, we look at metrics such as utilization rates. RITSS also does have some data, frankly, on residents that have stayed there and moved further along the housing continuum. I would say for street team outreach, we do actually provide council with data and statistics on that annually. So it's everything from like number of interactions with people and kind of what they, they do. I would say for the YWCA shelter, it would be a similar metrics around usage. I would say a lot of the, if anyone ever asks me, like, did this thing make this person better, I will always say no. It's like generally an intersectional community approach. So the metrics I'm looking at generally are tied to, are they, are they being used and is there general consensus that it is creating a better environment for residents in our community? And then I would say the encampment response coordinator, right now, I, we have, I wouldn't say a disjointed response, but if I was to look at the encampments that happened at City Hall last summer, we had a whole bunch of entities doing a whole bunch of different things. And most cities do have like a coordinated encampment response, almost tied to an emergency management approach, where when X happens, you've got social services doing this, you've got the police doing that, you've got the city doing that. So there's more of a coordination approach. And I don't know, is there anything else that you would want me to mention in that?
Through the mayor, I would just add that the, there's also, there's agreements in place, the service providers, so RITSS, for example, they have agreements with the provincial government for the staffing and operation of the space. So there is, there's lots of, lots of data that's required to show, as, as the city manager pointed to. You know, this person has come into our space, how long have they been here, have they been successful in, in moving down the housing continuum into transitional housing, into more permanent housing or affordable housing? So there, those are all pieces of data that are, that are looked at to ensure success of the space. And I would say the, the street team as well, as of late, has been running a fairly sophisticated data collection, which, you know, as, as the city manager mentioned, referrals, de-escalation, connection to service, connection to spaces, and they keep track of all those numbers nightly.
Counselor Flores?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, I think elaborating a little bit more with the question that Counselor Bezo just asked, could you share a little bit more if we have data or information about the positive economic impacts that spaces and resources like this that come through this kind of funding have in our community, not just in the positive things that happen to the people that use those facilities, but maybe through the decreased use of emergency services and police and that kind of thing?
Yeah, through the mayor, I, I think, you know, we wouldn't be the first city to discuss some, discuss this exactly. There's several research and data that points to cost savings, specifically taking, you know, housing-first approaches or wraparound approaches, and how that can decrease impact on emergency services, spaces and emergency rooms, police being allocated to the streets as well. There's some unique data that the street team follows around de-escalation. So their data point right now is around that 90%. So when they have interactions with individuals, about 90, 95% of the time, they're able to de-escalate. And meaning that it, it hasn't gone to that next level where, where police might have to be called. And frankly, that is cost-saving right there. So, so I, I think the organizations who, who run these programs initiatives do a really good job of showing that, that benefit as well. In the past, Phoenix Residential has done a, had done a really interesting study around housing first and followed individuals in the community and noted, noted, I guess, decrease in cost to the overall systems, whether that's police or EMS or waiting rooms because of the wraparound support that they were giving within those housing-first spaces. So we, we've seen good research in other cities, and we have some local research here that points to the positive impact too.
Thank you so much.
Okay, any further questions? Seeing none, I will go to our mover, I believe it's Counselor Frow. Would you like to close the debate? Okay, so I will ask the clerk to start the vote.
Thank you, mayor. I'll ask all members who are voting in favor to please raise your hands at this time. The vote is unanimous, mayor.
Okay, we'll now consider item CR 24-137, 2025 council and committee meeting calendar. And I will ask Deputy Mayor Zikiniak to please introduce the report.
Through the chair, the, the council and committee meeting calendar was discussed by an executive committee last week. And the recommendation is to approve the meeting schedule for Q1 of 2025, so that's January 1st, March 31st, for city council, executive committee, and Regina Planning Commission, and to direct the city clerk to report back to the February 26, 2024 executive committee meeting with a proposed meeting schedule for the remainder of 2025. The reason for this is there were some questions regarding whether it makes sense to change the time of meetings. And what executive committee recommended is that we start with status quo, and that gives us a few months to evaluate the current schedule and see if the committee wishes to make any changes for the remainder of the year. So that is why we, executive committee seeks concurrence, to start with a Q1 meeting schedule, examine how that's going, and then propose, then finalize the meeting schedule for the remainder of the year. Executive committee seeks concurrence.
Okay, thank you, counselor. So I'm going to ask to have someone move, move the report with the following amendment, that the Regina Planning Commission, we approved the calendar meeting dates up to December 31st, 2025, as outlined in Appendix A. Yeah, for the, sorry, just for the, this is just for the planning commission. Yeah. So I would need a mover for that report. Yeah, I've, I've been told you can move it. So Counselor Zikiniak, thank you. And a secondar? Counselor Raddens? And any questions? Seeing none, I will ask Counselor Zikiniak if you would like to close the debate. Okay, and I will ask the clerk to start the vote.
Thank you, mayor. I'll ask all members to indicate their approval by raising their hands. Mayor, the motion passes 10 to 0 with all members present voting in favor, with Counselor Manzanelli having temporarily stepped away from the meeting.
We're doing great. Okay, we're now going to consider item CR 24-139, 2025 elected official appointments. So I will ask Deputy Mayor Zikiniak to please introduce the report.
So as per how standard practice, the appointments were considered during our executive committee meeting, that was last week. They are considered in private, so members have the ability to put their name forward and debate or make a case for themselves, and we can select the representative for council, with folks having the ability to, to raise, to, to speak why they, they wish to be considered for the position. So, so that's how the process works. But anyway, so we finalized who are the recommended council appointees for these different committees for, I believe actually it'll be effective immediately, okay, rather than for the calendar year, which means that if there's any committee meetings between now and the end of the year, these appointees will be able to, to serve on these committees rather than there being we had several members of council who were interested in sitting on that important committee, and so we have three members, as opposed to two, who wish to sit on that committee. And then, as a result, we decreased the number of citizen members from four to three, so that we can have an uneven number of committee members, because if you have an even number, the possibility of having votes end in a tie obviously increases. And so we have also the approval of the Audit and Finance Committee meeting dates, dissolving the City Center Core Development Advisory Committee, because that committee is currently inactive. And there is the Appendix A and B notes who is recommended by Executive Committee to sit on these various committees, and the city solicitor needs to prepare amendments, respecting these appointments and composition. So I think that is all the details of what is recommended for approval by council today.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, so I will look to have someone move the report with the following amendments. One, that all appointments be made effective December 11th, 2024. The next is that the city manager and/or their designate be added to the resolution as outlined in Appendix B, as the second-appointed council designate for the Regina Exhibition Association Limited. And third, Mayor Chad Bishinsky be added to the resolution as outlined in Appendix B, as the second-appointed council designate for Economic Development Regina Incorporated. So looking for someone to move that report with those amendments. Thank you, Counselor Zakiniak. And a secondar, Counselor Mancinelli. Counselor Zakiniak, any other thoughts on that? Okay, and any questions from anybody on that? Seeing none, Counselor Zakiniak, would you like to close debate? I will move to asking the clerk to start the vote.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll ask all members who wish to vote in favor to raise your hands at this time, respecting the appointments. It's unanimous, Mayor.
Okay, we will now consider motion MN 24-17, reimbursement of $50,000 to Adapted Recreation Facility Accessibility Improvements Capital Account. I will ask for a council member to read the motion and move it to the floor. Counselor Turnbull, thank you.
What page is that? Oh, so just read to the left. Therefore, be it resolved that City Council direct administration to transfer $50,000 from the Community Investments Grant Reserve to the Recreation Facility Accessibility Improvements Capital Account. And a secondar.
And we'll get a secondar, please. Counselor Flores? Okay, any questions? Counselor Zakiniak?
I just think it would be helpful for administration to explain why this motion is on the floor, like briefly what happened, and why there is the need to reimburse the $50,000, and confirm that administration is in favor of that reallocation, through the Chair.
Does the administration... Deb?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mayor Bishinsky. Originally, $50,000 was allocated from the Recreation Facility Accessibility Improvements budget, to put towards the Washtenaw Water Slide. In the event that that water slide did not move forward, or that water slide did not move forward, and council approved that that $50,000 instead be provided as emergency funding towards the seniors center. So the purpose, one of the purposes of the Community Investment Grants Reserve is to support community investment partners, and including community center operating grants, scholarships, and funding other community facilities. And so, really, this is almost an accounting correction, if you will, and there is funding available in the Community Investment Grant to provide this emergency funding to the seniors center, which has already been allocated to the seniors center. So administration would support this motion, and I'll leave it at that, if you have any more questions.
Thank you. I just thought it would be helpful to have a summary of how we got here, so thanks very much.
Thank you. Any other questions on that one? Okay, seeing none. Counselor Turnbull, would you like to close debate?
Sure. Yeah, so obviously, I'm in support of this. It was, at the time, it was the funding they had access to immediately, where they assessed, and that's what they had to take it out of the accessibility fund, but the accessibility fund does need that fund for its project, so I'm glad it's being rectified, and obviously support it.
Thank you. Okay, so I will move to vote.
Thank you, Mayor. I will ask all members of council who vote in favor to raise your hands at this time. It's unanimous, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, we are now going to consider the bylaws. I will ask Deputy Mayor Zakiniak to do a first reading of the following bylaws, 2024-86 through 2024-102. Thank you.
You're very welcome. It is with great pleasure that I move, seconded by Counselor Turnbull, that bylaws number 2024-86 through numbers 2024-97, and number 2024-100 through numbers 2024-102, be introduced and read a first time.
Okay, I'll ask the clerk to start the vote.
Who wish to vote in favor of first reading, to raise their hands. First reading carries 11 to 0, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Zakiniak, can you please do second reading of the bylaws?
I move, seconded by Counselor Flores, that bylaws number 2024-86 through number 2024-97, and numbers 2024-100 through numbers 2024-102 be read a second time.
I would ask all members of council who wish, I'm sorry, maybe there are questions, sorry.
Does any member of council have questions? No questions, so I'll pass it to the clerk for the vote.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll ask all members who wish to vote in favor of second reading, to raise their hands at this time. Second reading passes 11 to 0, Mayor.
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor Zakiniak, can you please do consent for third reading of bylaws?
Thank you. I move, seconded by Counselor Radens, that council hereby consent to bylaws number 2024-86 through number 2024-97, and number 2024-100 through number 2024-102, going to third reading at this meeting.
I will ask the clerks to start the vote.
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask all members in favor of proceeding to third reading at today's meeting to raise their hands. Counselor Bezo?
Thank you, Mayor. Unanimous consent has been achieved, as required by law.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Zakiniak, can you please do final reading, the final time, of the bylaws?
Will do. I move, seconded by Counselor Mancinelli, that bylaws number 2024-86 through numbers 2024-97, numbers 2024-103, numbers 2024-102, be read a third time.
Okay, I'll ask the clerk to start the vote.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll ask all members to indicate their approval of third reading. Third reading passes 11 to 0, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I feel you deserve this, Counselor Zakiniak. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. I will call the question, any opposed? Sorry, I need a secondar for the motion. Counselor Radens? And I will call the question, any opposed? Carried.